Do we need to give it a few seconds or are we close enough that we're okay? Good evening, everybody. We want to welcome you to our special business meeting this evening. We do have a sign up sheet. I have it up here. If anybody would like to make comments, please sign up and you're welcome to do that. Board members, since we don't have a meeting in July, I've been authorized to give you double PTO days from here on out, so. Everybody's excited, right? Thanks all of you for coming and everybody in the district office and the public. They, it's important, we feel like, that we get this decision made and whatever that's going to be and move forward. And so with that, we'll turn the time over to Superintendent Rick Woodford for the reverence and the pledge of allegiance will be by Board Member Denise Maynard.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here under such favorable conditions. We're grateful for this beautiful community in which we live. We're thankful for the moisture that we've received so far this summer and ask thee to continue to bless us with that which we need in order to sustain our farms and grounds and land. And please, Father, bless us this evening as we visit as a board and community and administrative team that we will be mindful of the needs of our students and keep the important things at the forefront of our conversations and thinking. Bless us that we can be professional and congenial together and that the outcome of this meeting will be such that it'll be favorable for our community moving forward. We are so grateful for the opportunities that we have to be able to work together and to serve and to be able to be a wonderful educational system for our students. And we thank thee for all that we've been given and we pray for these things humbly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The sign up sheets on the podium if anybody would like to comment. You know, sometimes it's nice to look around and count your blessings. I got an uncle that lives in St. George and he lives right on the golf course. He's older and him and his wife are retired and that's the way they fill their days is playing golf. And they bought their homes down there and built around that golf course. You literally walk off of his back lawn and you are on whatever hole it is. I've never, I only played golf once in high school. That was a long time ago. And so the lawns join what the golf course doesn't cut, he cuts because it's his yard. And so they've been trying to take their water away from them. It's a private owned golf course. They've been trying to take their water away from them for several years and there've been lots of struggles over that because they're at the point in St. George, they don't rather to quit issuing building permits or what to do. They don't have anything else for people to do in their yards. And they got word day before yesterday that the fight was over. They wasn't fighting over water anymore. The water entity there had offered them enough million dollars that the golf course sold them the water and the golf course is now closed. So they, we don't have to, and we've been so blessed in Vernal this year. You look around, things are green and growing and so I'm thankful for where we live and all the blessings that we have. Tonight, we're going to turn the time over for discussion on the UNO High School Ag Building and we'll turn that over to our business administrator, Jason, and him and the superintendent will get us the information.
Do we need, this is a business, do we need a motion for it?
We could, we could do it before or we could go information and then entertain a motion. Why don't we do information, then entertain a motion, then conversation for the board? Does that sound good, Ford?
Alright. Okay, just wanted to get ahead of that one if needed. So I'd just like to just go through a little bit of background. So a couple of the board members have been, a few of the board members have been on as this project has progressed. It has meandered and gone in different directions. We've attempted different solutions and this is kind of the culmination of that, of that whole path. But this started six months, less than six months, when Superintendent and I came onboard that 2020 calendar year. And we knew a bubble was coming and the high school was, had some issues with being able to get certain programs the space they needed. And it's not just the Ag Building. That's what we're talking about building, but we're actually trying to get sciences and robotics and those types of disciplines in the proper place in the high school so that you're not having a drill press next to an English class. I might be over-exaggerating that. I'm just, there is a drill press. I just don't know what's around it, but it's classrooms. Math, okay, there you go. So, so we need to, the best way to go about that is to, that we were able to find at that point was to try to bring over some blue iron buildings from behind UMS. Alright, that was our first, first attack on this, at this problem or this need. And we felt really good about that. We were excited about it. It was going to be about a million or just under a million dollars. And as we got into that design, it was told to us as we were in that design that we could not move the building and then have students housed underneath that metal.
We couldn't get an engineer to sign off on that plan. They just didn't, the buildings are too old. They didn't know what the structural capacities were of those buildings. And so it just was a great idea that if you can't get an engineer to sign off on a building for kids, you can't put kids under the roof. So that's, that's why that didn't, didn't work out.
So that's, that was the genesis of this whole, of this whole idea was to improve our sciences and our agricultural facilities at the same time. So then we moved into a, moved it up to a 1.2 million dollar budget to build. We coupled it with the CEC and went out to bid. We had some good opportunities arise, so we put a stop to that. And the CEC is in the process of being looked at and analyzed and we're looking for a really good solution there, which left the Ag Building on its own. So we went out to bid again. And a couple of months ago, we received word and talking with our architects, we budgeted $2 million. And, and that was approved in the last board meeting. Well, yeah, it would have been the last board meeting. How about that? Yeah. So we put it out to bid and what came back is the low bid was, I'm just going to use 3.5. You have it in your documents, the exact amount, $3,581,880. So that's a pretty significant increase. In talking with Alex at BCBO, just trying to understand exactly like where this is coming from. The bids are, bids come back on a single line item. So what he, this conversation we're about to share, I hesitate to share it because it's really a lot of hearsay and conjecture and thought, less data behind it. But as we were out to bid, a couple of things popped up that he said, really, we're working against us. Inflation, of course, we all know that. The next was that it's a really small project in a rural community and trying to get subs to come and bid on these projects. The, the subs are just looking at a premium right now. Frankly, there's a lot of work. There's inflationary pressures and we're out here. And there's also a fair amount of uncertainty with what's moving in the future. So this is my thought and as I've talked with others, some of their thought, again, it's just thought, right? There's probably a fair amount of people that, when you're asking them to give you a contract for a project that will take a year, they're going to be a bit conservative, would be my guess, right? So those are some of the pressures that I believe spiked this beyond what was expected. So there are some things that we could potentially do to combat that and I believe we can do them. But in order to do that, we would certainly want to award a bid and then work at doing some value engineering and try to control those costs the best we can at this point. That's, that would be our step to try to mitigate those, those things. But what the bid is, again, we've, we've gone through multiple phases of this project. So just so you're aware of what the bid was, it's, we, we put out a bid for a five classroom building with, with an opt, a second option at a three classroom building just to see what the difference would be. Because really, our initial thought is to do a three classroom. That was our initial thought. But as we got into metal building strategy, it really, like, once you're in a metal building adding sections, it's, you start to gain efficiency in square footage as you move a metal building bigger. So we added a section and two additional classrooms for future growth for both, both the Ag Building and the sciences because there's some sciences that we believe cross very well with agricultural. I mean, it's an agricultural science, right? So that's, so the bids came back and there was only about a $200,000 difference in adding two classrooms. So my recommendation would be that we, we go for the five classrooms as well. So that's really it. In, in discussing and going over a couple of things, I just wanted to, just as one additional data point, just talk a little bit about our student enrollment numbers. And so each of you have this. It's, it's in front of you. It's from, I think it was my February, February presentation on student enrollment projections, but enough questions were asked about what is our high school, where are we at with our high school capacity? Our high school capacity is somewhere around 2,300 students, give or take, as far as what a group of architects determined probably about six years ago. Alright, so that's where those capacity numbers have come from and.
Just to clarify, that's maximum capacity, okay?
Yep, right. But the way we have certain things set up, you might call it inefficient or you might call it good use. It's, it's really up to, to the individual. But we have wrestling, we have an indoor wrestling practice area, we have the Ag facility. And so just because an architect says a certain number, they're talking really about a whiteboard and teaching doesn't necessarily mean that that's an optimal, kind of what Superintendent was saying, it's maximum. We believe we're about at our max right now. We have done some renovations to some classrooms in this summer, this summer alone, to try to manage the classes. As you can see, there's a bubble. The bubble this year is in the sophomore class. So, so if you move everything forward one year, the first of the bubble's going to be in 11th grade, 10th, 9th, with one more kind of tail end of the bubble following. But we're still above 500 students for the most part. There's a couple of exceptions following. So we're dropping really low classes off and backfilling with 500. So while the bubble will start to ease in three or four years, assuming no growth, which I don't think we can actually assume, but assuming no growth and all these numbers just are the same, we really wouldn't ease in the high school significantly for, for multiple years. So that's, that's the other reason why we have looked at trying to move buildings, trying to renovate the high school in, in small areas to make classrooms work better. And we're doing a pretty good job. I'm encouraged every time I go to the high school and work with maintenance and Christie and her team. Everything's on the table to try to make this work regardless of the Ag Building. And we are making things work and, and we have good solutions. But space can only be configured in so many ways and that's where we're at. So I will stop here and pause here. Are there questions with regards to the historical thought on why, why this building, why now, or student capacity or any of those types of points?
And let's, let's limit this to questions right now. The board's going to have ample time to discuss and make points. Let's, let's go questions.
So Jason, existing facilities today for Ag, what do we have?
We have two, two greenhouses, a, a animal facility and that's all separate in the back across the road on the north end of the facility right now. Then you move into the actual building. You have, I believe, a classroom and Mindy, you might be able to assist. Oh, Dave's here. Three greenhouses. Okay, if you would be able to answer this better than I, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
So Dave, it's in comparison to what we're building here, this is, this shows five classrooms. What do you have today?
We have two classrooms. Okay, when I started back in 99, there was one classroom and it's a small classroom. All the classrooms in the vocational hall were built.
Small meaning 10, 20, 30 students?
I can limit, I put 32, I can put 32 in there. I've had as many as 38 in there several years ago and that was just a nightmare. 32 is really, really tight for me to, I'm one that I don't sit, I can't stand still. I'm always, anyway. So that really hurt me when we had that many. But 32's tight. That's capacity now and that's my room. Okay, and then, so it was that and then a shop area. And then over the years through mini grants, extra money that came about, we, we changed from having the big shop program mainly because of the tech, because we were kind of duplicating some programs there. When I first started, I taught some Ag mechanics and we had, we had some, and in Ag mechanics, that's welding, construction, electrical, plumbing, all kinds of things. But we surveyed the kids and budgets were tight as always. And we surveyed the kids, so what kind of mechanics do you want? And most of them wanted welding. And it didn't make sense because I was, I was right in the middle and on, to my left was the auto shop. To my right was the diesel shop and across the hall was a welding shop. So I was doing Ag mechanics and we had all these other programs. Eventually, those have all been adopted into the tech. So they're all tech now. And of course, most of all, all of them except auto is across the street. So now, current state, we have my room, we have a little room behind us that's now going to be the UTTM room. It's quite small, beginning this year. And then we have a laboratory room which got capacity on that little room. In that room, we don't have desks and just a big, a big demo table and the counter space because that's where we use microscopes and do, do labs. And that room, boy, if you put 20 kids in there, it's really tight just to go in there for a lab. And then we have an additional classroom during the remodel that was built in the back corner of what was originally that shop. And that's Mrs. Riley's room right now. And that room's a little bit bigger than mine, but 32's her capacity right now as well.
So you have a total of 64 students that can be there today then, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And how many people do we, how many students do we have attending Ag in those buildings?
615.
So you're full of five periods a day with 32, close?
Yeah, but neither of us teach our prep because I couldn't survive without a prep. I don't think very well.
So four, basically, four times, okay.
Yeah.
That's, those numbers don't jive, but that's alright.
So those numbers are in your board docs and let me, let me clarify those numbers. That 600 is, that's not 600 different kids. That's, that's maybe 300 to 400 kids that take multiple sections of. So the numbers may be better, but what you gave me didn't match, so. Sorry.
That, I guess that kind of helps clarify.
Okay.
So our expectations of growth, if we have more space, are not so much the Ag side, but the science side is what you're saying?
It's both. And it, so if you've, we really need to take a walk there. That's unfortunate. I didn't have foresight for that. But they're kind of in a hallway and so it's, it's growing the current students, the delivery of education to the current students that we have already, in addition to allowing for more to, to enter the program also. So it's, it's really, there's a number of student component growth, but it's also the ability to do labs, to bring in, deliver education in a, in a better way.
So our goal, Jason, would be to offload some of the school itself if it's at capacity?
Yes.
That's, that's what we're thinking along these lines, correct?
Yeah, so by, by virtue of moving the Ag program, it's going to open up square footage for other classes and one in particular would be our engineering program, which is in the math hall right now. It's completely, it's, it's not practical or, I mean, we, we've got, we've got machinery in a part of the building we really shouldn't have machinery in. We got sawdust and right there, we're, we're trying to teach math in the new part of the building. And so that would be our first priority is to move our engineering.
Thanks, Dave.
Program over to the existing Ag and that's going to free up another classroom, math classroom or whatever we need academic. So it's a domino effect, but it, it frees up square footage within the building by virtue of moving this program out. So it's, it's a win-win if you look at it that way. We're going to have better facilities for our Ag and, and we're going to free up space that's much needed as this bubble comes through. So this would actually, I, I don't want to say it's going to prevent us from having any modulators, but it's going to cut that number way down if that happens.
I guess that would, those are my thoughts is, is, Jason, you said it's, it's possible to add on. Is it possible to add on later? Or is it better to add on today based on, on this sheet of numbers that we have today? And would that free up more space? If we're going to spend, you know, $4 million or more, you know, for two additional classes, you spent $200,000. For two more additional classes, is that another $200,000? I'm just curious, is, is there more we can download if we increase the size of this today than try to do it tomorrow?
We, we have one issue, so.
Sorry, I should have asked you these questions earlier to get us to think about it.
So metal buildings are nice in the fact that you can add a section to them, absolutely. Our issue is going to be, we're going to run out of space moving east. So I think we could add probably one more section if we needed, but we will run out of space moving east soon.
So, so looking at your numbers, looking at the capacity of the high school, we definitely need some space. If there is growth that's assumed in the valley, that space isn't going to be adequate. Is there some way we can, for this money, you're already putting a roof on this, is there an expansion to this today that we don't have to do something again in two years?
Well, that's the plan. That's why we're, we're proposing to, to build space for two additional classrooms. It'll just be a shell right now. It'll just be extra workspace for the program.
So you feel like that is for, for future growth?
Well, I think if we go beyond that, we're just guessing.
Okay.
You know, this, this is a, this is a conservative, safe guess and, and the question is, if we have to go bigger than that, do we really want to start having a conversation about a second high school? If we get a big boom and a lot, you know, if our enrollment increases significantly, I think that becomes the conversation. Even with two high schools, we may have all of our Ag kids come to UNO High School because that's where we're going to have a world-class facility for FFA and, and Ag. So, so we're not closing any doors for the future by building this. We're, we're, we're just addressing our more immediate needs now, but keeping our options open. If we make this too big, we're closing our options. We, you know, then our square footage gets so big, you can't, how do you justify ever building a second high school? So I, you know, in our, in our 20-year plan, we really got to think about, you know, how big of a high school do we want?
I agree. So these class sizes, if I'm right, the ability to add the three additional classes, five? But we're, we're, we're not tearing down the existing. We're not replacing the existing. That building will stay. So, so it really is an addition of three classes with two potential growth, correct?
Well, it's, yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I, I guess.
I just want to make sure I understood that right, so.
So we're not, we're not, there's no demolition of any existing building?
Yeah, so what Todd is saying is can, can, when you look at our current structure, we're going to be adding the potential for five classrooms. It's really two classrooms, a lab and two additional classrooms, but yes, it's five learning spaces.
Five learning spaces, which is still, is, is pretty good. Five spaces with the numbers of 32, 60. You know, it looks like, that looks like we could go, it looks like we could, sorry, I'm doing the math quick in my head. It looks like we could go to a capacity of about 2,800 at our high school with those numbers. Maybe a little bit less than that, but I'm just, so it does give us some growth.
Sure.
Alright. Sorry, I did those numbers in my head, so I'm still thinking about it.
There's no confusion in the future. You said there will be nothing tore down. I believe there will be a greenhouse that's there that's tore down or moved, correct? What was the final, is it coming down? Just so somebody doesn't say in the future, you said you wasn't going to tear anything down. We're not tearing any classrooms down.
If, if we do anything with the greenhouses, we'll, we'll replace that. It'll be, I mean, we may not be able to move them. They're kind of hard to move and reconstruct. But if we get grants and we can build some new ones, then eventually we may tear down some greenhouses, but only if we have addition, you know, new facilities to accommodate that.
So, so the key is, is the growth in the Ag department as well as possibly moving some science out there?
Yeah, really, you have to look at it this way. It, when you add square footage, it's just growth generally, right? It's growth generally.
So in walking distance from the main building is, it's pretty, across the street, pretty minimal right there, right?
And it's ADA accessible, which is why we, we wanted to move that onto flat ground instead of up on the hill.
So, so we've kind of heard a little bit of capacity-wise, while we, we might free up a little bit of space. What, what are the needs for the Ag department? What are they hoping to expand and do that's different than what they're doing right now?
I'll start. Dave, if you want to jump in, I guess you can, but. So as far as, there's a few things on, on the horizon. We haven't even spoken about all of them, but, but there, there is a fishery program where we can get some larger fish tanks. So, so the current design with the larger building gives us a, it, kind of a unique space where we can have some fish tanks and kids can learn about farming fish and, and all that has to happen with the aquatics and, and that environment. And so that would be, that would be, even though we've done some of that, this would be a bigger program, so it's an expansion. But there's some other things that, that are on, on the horizon. You know, many communities our size, regardless of climate, believe it or not, have a lot of, they're, they're, you're seeing an expansion of, of local farms for produce. We don't have a lot of that here right now. We have, we have a lot of cattle farming and commercialized farming, but, but if I want a, a fresh cucumber in my salad at a local restaurant, I'm probably not going to get it. Not one that was picked yesterday, right? Many communities now, that's exactly what you get because there's more of these family, local 10-acre, 15-acre farms, greenhouses. ten-acre, fifteen-acre farms, greenhouses, uh, you know, fresh produce. I, I think there, there's a, a huge opportunity here to, to provide our students with the type of education where they can feel confident to go out and expand, uh, our, um, our agricultural, cultural programs here, to be able to provide our community with something maybe that we don't have right now. So, uh, I, you know, just speaking from my vision and what I wanna see happen here, um, I, I think that it's, you know, you look at importance, right? I was gonna save this speech for later, but I'm gonna give it now. We have a lot of kids that, that, that go to college, we have a lot of kids that compete in our activities programs, um, but you think about the importance of ag, okay, we're talking about feeding our community and society. It's, there isn't really anything more important, if you think about it. The other thing is, is a lot of kids in ag may not go on to college, they may or may not go to technical school, but many of them, after high school, they go work the family farm. And so this is the last opportunity for formal education that they have, and in the more relevant we can make it, and the more robust we can make it, the, the, the more likely they're gonna go and, and use new technologies and have an open mind to, to, to be, make that family farm the very best that it can be. So, so it could be their last exposure, right? Our, our high school program could be their last exposure before going right to work on the family farm. Now, that's different than a lot of other trades, right? Uh, where kids may go off to college, or they may go to a technical school and, and get a certificate, and, uh, so, yeah, there, there's, there's a lot of room here to expand and to grow, I mean, this is UNA County, we have a lot of agriculture happening here. Uh, so, yes, there's, there's a vision to expand and to continue to make this, I, I wanna see a world-class program, I wanna see a program that, that o- other communities around the, the country wanna come and, and visit and see, and, uh, that's, that's the significance and importance of it. Um, a- a- again, we have a changing dynamic in, in our, in our country with, with ag, and, uh, we've gotta prepare our kids to be able to meet that, and, and I'm, I'm excited for the opportunity. So anyway, there's, there's the vision, uh, I don't know, Dave, do you wanna add anything?
If I were to add anything, a couple of things, uh, yes, the industry's changing a lot, and, and it's been predicted and, and said many times by, by experts, that we've gotta produce seventy pers- seventy percent more food than we are now by twenty fifty, and we're, we're not even close. Uh, but with that, we're going, moving a lot of, a, a long ways away from the traditional ranch hay-type operations, which, which I think we're always gonna have and we need, uh, to a lot of things that are not so traditional, like the aquaponics, the hydroponics, uh, the fodder systems that are indoors, uh, that are producing a lot of feed for animals and, and for humans. Um, so things have changed a lot, I have a lot of students, they're not a, a lot of non-traditional, especially in landscape, um, nursery, greenhouse-type operations, uh, floral culture industry is quite, quite large and, and expanding. So there's a lot of careers, we, we do actually get a lot of our students that go on to, to college, university programs. I've got a lot of former students that are, I've got two or three that are, that are petroleum engineers, of all but, and I just, I, it surprised me, but they were very heavily involved in agriculture, still are on, on a part-time basis, but their career is, is in a whole different industry, I've got students in the medical field, and we have a lot of students in the program now, they're looking outside of agriculture, but they use the leadership and the experience and, and the connections that they, they make, and, and the science, because we're all science-based, uh, to go on and just better be prepared to, to be good productive adults and, and have good, successful careers in, in whatever.
So Dave, while you're up there, you, you mentioned that we've basically lost a couple of, or gained. Uh, the tech center's taken a couple of our departments basically over to the tech center.
Right.
What, what is keeping them from taking the ag side over there as well? They already do some ag programs with their hay and that type of thing, what else, what else is available?
Actually, they, they, the only program they have that's agriculture-related is the, the record-keeping program that's, that's, uh, ran by David Gilman. Uh, other than that, they don't do any agricultural programs. Um, most high schools in Utah, we have about almost a hundred programs, ag-science programs, in all sizes of high schools, from Tabiona to Manila to, to your largest schools here in the, in the state, uh, Copper Hills, Bingham, they have agriculture programs. Um, those schools, a lot of them have, the ag mechanics is part of their agriculture curriculum, so they're doing the whole gamut, from ag mechanics to food science in some cases, to your traditional animal science and plant science-type courses. Uh, natural resources is a huge area as well. But since UNA Basin, and Roosevelt's kind of in a similar, similar situation, since we have the tech, um, and they're offering the welding and the, the auto and, and diesel, that, in those days, especially when budgets were so tight, and with equipment and trying to maintain that and keep up shops, it just made sense to, to let the tech, let, let them specialize in the mechanic sides of things, so that's where we went.
So that makes sense, so, so the superintendent's mentioned something, that a pristine, or a, a place where we've, we would be above the rest, what is, what is our vision on, on this ag building? What, that would make it that pristine building, or that step above the rest that would draw?
With, with the new facility? Well, you know, there's, just having a, an updated facility is, is a big, big part of it, first of all. Um, the Fish and Wildlife Service has volunteered here locally to, to supply us with, with one section of the, of the building with fish tanks and help us with an aquaculture program there. Um, more of the fisheries like, like the superintendent was talking about, that would be something new. Uh, Wasatch High School, they're actually after five agriculture teachers now at Wasatch High School, a very intense program. Uh, they are doing a lot with, with aquaponics, uh, they're doing a lot with the, the direct production of food right to consumer, even with chickens, they have chickens that are put out on their airport in, in cages that are, that are pasture-raised chickens for meat, and they send them to a processor. So more of the, the direct from the production to the consumer would be something. Uh, and, and again, I've always thought agriculture as an academic, is every bit as academic as mathematics down the hall, we're science upstairs. Uh, I'm an, I'm a product of agriculture education, and I'm an academic person, and that's where I went. Uh, and a lot of kids are, there's a lot of them. We have, like I said, we have a lot of kids that agriculture is something that they just love, and, and the, the, the need and the careers for agriculture is just tremendous right now, continuing to grow.
I appreciate that, I, you know, you look at your vision, I mean, I purchase most of my flower, or all my flowers, most of my garden product from, from the school, but the reality is, is, is what is, what is the future, what do you see, is, what, what is your, you know, your vision of what, what it's going to be before you retire?
Probably three teacher minimum program, uh, natural resources integrated into our program, I think needs to, needs to be there, especially because of the natural resources in our area. Uh, with Forest Service BLM, I think that's a big side of it, and of course, the fisheries part. Uh, more with, with the greenhouses, uh, with the urban, the urban side of agriculture a little bit, 'cause we're seeing more and more production on, on smaller acreage, but it's more intense and more, uh, more efficient. Uh, so I think kind of more of the, I, the, the traditional stuff's always gonna be there, it'll still be part of it, but more of the, the new, uh, s- some of the things that may not even be out there. You know, I, I've looked a little bit off and on at, at the hemp industry, and, and I, I know that.
Just what we need there.
I know, I, I know I have kids that are gonna end, end up working in that industry.
They, they will.
Too, and I, and I, in fact, I thought, man, maybe I need to go to a workshop on, on that, not that, you know, just to learn how to grow it, but anyway.
So you feel like the, the, the ag.
Kind of cutting-edge things.
Sorry, you feel the ag, it's, it's, it's worm fertilizer is, is the big thing right now.
Sure.
I, I, the potential, I assume, is there, that's unbelievable, they market for worm fertilizer, but, uh, you're almost, you're telling me that you feel like the ag will fill this building eventually?
It could, but i- in, in discussions over the last couple of years, since this building, the first proposed, the first reason for the building was to get us closer to the facilities that we added with some grants, what, three years ago? Three years ago with additional greenhouse and, and the animal barn, to get us closer, 'cause right now, it's, you know, to walk up the hill, it takes a little time. Um, but with that, we've been able to expand some of the things we're doing, um, with, with some of these new things. So would it fill a whole building of five classrooms? No, but I could see another, a science teacher or two in that building, uh, and, and us working together and using some of those facilities together. I, I'm not one that would say, you know, you're, you're not welcome to use this room, I, I think it would be fine to, to share, share those resources.
So how long can you get my with what you have?
I'm, as long as I got a roof, I always tell everybody, if I have a roof over my head, I'm okay, I'm happy.
But you're at max growth?
I believe we are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I ask a lot of questions.
No, that's okay.
That's okay, and, and just to clarify, the, the plan is, is not to build all five of those classrooms right now. Uh, the plan is, is the, the two that would be interior classrooms is essentially just gonna give them more shop, like, open space to do projects, and so if we don't build those two classrooms, if we never build them.
You'll still utilize it, it looks like.
They're gonna utilize that space every day, yeah, yeah, from the design, that's what it looks like to me.
When, when we prepare for FFA events, career development events, and, and leadership development events, we have, just for example, say in agronomy, in the agronomy event, there's, uh, there's over a hundred and, about a hundred and fifty species of, of just weeds that the students have to learn. And so to learn those, we do a lot of time outside, but in the winter, I have to have plant mounts, or when it starts to freeze, I'll get plants that are starting to, you know, just getting frozen, we have to set all those out, so they can continue to practice those, we don't have the, the space to do that kind of thing now. We have, we drag things out and we have to put it back, and drag them out again, put it back, and things get damaged, lost, and unorganized sometimes, and it becomes kind of a hassle. So that kind of extra space would definitely be utilized a lot.
I appreciate your time, the reality is, is, is ag is, is, is a key in, in this valley, I think, anywhere, and, and I think we realize that, it's just, it's just what we're asking today, is a lot more than what we thought it was gonna be tomorrow, yesterday, so.
You bet.
Sorry, Scoot, did you have something? I talk a lot.
Okay, other questions from board members that you have?
Is there, are we gonna have a chance to hear from, I'm wondering if the students, that we have some here that are in the ag program, or?
So nobody has signed up, but, but they're, they're welcome, uh, if present, that's, that's your call.
I don't know if they want to, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
So you, you were on the team that, uh, went to state, correct? Nationals, did they, that team end up going to Nationals? You're getting ready to go to Nationals, all right.
I would love to say something to my mom.
Yes.
Please come, please come up and state your name, would you, um, for the record?
So I'm Dwayne O'Williams. I'm just gonna say, my oldest daughter never even had any intentions on me included in ag in any way, shape, or form. As a freshman, she kept saying, I'm not doing this, I, they keep asking me to do ag, I'm not going, I don't wanna do anything with the FFA, this is, it's not what I wanna do, I wanna play sports, right? She's an academic girl, she graduated from UNTH, I don't even remember, three point nine something. She was the animal science Sterling Scholar this year. Animal science is paying for her college. UBU is giving her a full ride scholarship because of animal science. She went, uh, she was the, you should probably come up here, not me. She won the state prepared speech two years ago, um, and her speech was all about GMOs, and how to make plants grow better, and what we do with the plants in order to make sure that we can feed communities better. That come from my kid that doesn't want anything to do with the ag. She was also the leader, she's the chair of the parliamentary, parliamentary procedure team that's going to Nationals this year. My second daughter loves ag. She has every plan to go into veterinary science, she does everything that she can. She's one of those students that their numbers don't add up right, because she's in every ag class she can quite, she can be in. She's also on the parliamentary procedure team. Two totally different kids, totally different interests, totally different things, both of them are benefiting hugely from agriculture at UNTH. They've learned tons of stuff that they wouldn't have normally learned, and I hope I'm not giving away some of this stuff, but we had, uh, you that bloated and died a couple of, uh, a year and a half ago or so. They had twins, that nobody was at home to feed the twins. They were able to go take them to UNTH, high into the barn, and were able to feed the twins in between classes and do things, and all the other ag kids were able to participate in that and help with that. They've been able to ultrasound animals, they've been able to do all sorts of things that these kids are learning, their life lesson learning, that they wouldn't get in any other classroom in this, in the high school. They're not gonna get that from math, they're not gonna get that from even their science classes, not the hands-on stuff that they get with Ms. Mr. Wilson and Ms. Riley in the ag section. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kids or anybody else that would like to make a comment?
He, he's not a kid.
He's close.
Just one second, Scoot. Young lady, come on up, I can tell you're dancing in your chair.
Hi, I'm Scotland Williams, I'm her daughter, she didn't say that out. Um, I, so when they first announced this, this is a couple of years, y- years ago, and obviously I wasn't super involved in FFA then, but I was so excited, because, um, in the ag room, we're all on top of each other, and we've got a lot of stuff going on, and it's great, but we really don't have a lot of space to do things, even with all of the rooms that we have. Um, we'll have officer meetings going on in Mr. Wilson's classroom, and floriculture will be in the back of the classroom practicing for things, and then we've got kids in the greenhouse working on nursery, we've got all our agronomy set up in the one classroom, and, um, vet practice and horse practice going on in Ms. Riley's, there's a lot of stuff going on, which is fine, but we'd definitely benefit from having more room, would have more one-on-one interaction with our coaches, and be able to focus on our teams more. And like Mr. Wilson was talking about agronomy, I did agronomy and competed on the team for a couple of years. There's a lot to do there, and it gets, it would be so much easier, and we'd be able to learn so much more from it, if we were able to have an area that was set for that, for agronomy, and have a place set for floriculture, just like our greenhouses are set aside for greenhouse classes and for nursery, and helping with floriculture. Um, anyway, I've been so excited for this project to come in, to play, and that's not really, I'm not gonna be there anymore. Um, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be so cool to see how this project, if, when implemented, if implemented, will help the FFA program thrive, 'cause our numbers are dwindling a little bit right now, and I think it's just because we haven't had that much, um, one-on-one interaction with the members, and they haven't been able to get as much hands-on time lately, just because we haven't had enough room to house everybody and center everybody. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kami Williams, um, I don't like to talk, but, um, so just kind of, um, some concerns with the space, you guys are like, if, what if we don't fill it? Um, so Roosevelt has a huge shop, their shop is probably triple the size of ours, um, at the moment, and they have almost two hundred FFA members, um, that's not including all of their other ag kids, but like before, they didn't have, like when my dad was in high school, they had a tiny FFA program because it's smaller facilities. Um, so my input, I feel like our, um, our ag program and our FFA will grow immensely with this, um, new building being bigger than the one we already have.
So what's the size of your FFA today?
Um, we have seventy-eight members when I checked last, eight, eight, eighty-five.
Pretty good group.
Yeah, that are members, not just our ag kids.
Thank you. We're proud of you, kids, good job. Okay, Scoot, your turn.
Oh, my, my comment or, uh, question was, these young ladies just brought it up, we have one or two or three extra classrooms in these buildings that we're gonna put up? Why not make those classrooms for twenty-five students instead of thirty-two or thirty-four? What would be wrong with that?
Scoot's talking class size reduction.
Make more smaller classes?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I.
Because it's like they were saying, there's not enough room in there for them to participate. And that's something that needs to be taken care of.
So just, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, so you're talking about in the new building, instead of do like the three or five classes, do multiple classes at, at smaller capacities?
Well, it doesn't matter, I mean, whatever the professors want, you know?
Sure.
Would they rather, uh, teach like twenty-five instead of thirty-five?
Right, yes.
And yet, if, that you'd have room for those twenty-five to be able to do what they need to do.
Scoot, let's not talk about that, the health, the, every other department will kill us.
No, it's, it's a good point, though, but to do that, it means hiring additional staff, and, and, you know, the larger building gives us the flexibility to do that, that's exactly the idea.
Well, we need to hire them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's hire, because that's the way we're gonna get our students taken care of.
Right. And we, and we typically do, you know, we respond to the, to the need. And so if, if the enrollment grows, we will, when we get to that threshold, we'll hire additional staff.
And so, looks like the capacity of the, each of these rooms, from the architect's point of view, is thirty-six.
And, and the building design, um, if you look at it, it's in a, it's a pretty cool design in the fact that there's a, a large room in the middle that allows for teachers and others to actually go into a, a common area and, and work on projects, uh, trailer things into that main area, and, and really have some flex space to, to really adapt the, the environment to whatever needs they're, they're trying to do. So, really, really interesting stuff, but, yeah. As far as the class size, right now, we're just budgeted at, at our current capacities. Could be more.
Okay, any other questions for, anybody? Does the board members have any other questions?
I have two.
No, one, Robin. Okay, go ahead.
I don't know, I, this may not be fair. I just, I'm just curious, how many of the Joe Woodard kids does he have? Like, the, the robotics kids, do we know down that hallway?
Engineering?
Engineering? Okay, okay, then the other question is, Dave, I've, since I've been in the high school, you do an amazing job, to which you didn't talk about, um, your special needs kids, like, and to see the, what, anyway, I, I would like you to maybe explain, 'cause the hands-on is what's so impressive to me, but then you've had to go up that hill with not, I, I mean, wheelchairs and, I mean, explain, maybe, I don't know. I just would like you to speak to that.
That'd be another great use of the additional space, is we wanna involve more special needs students. Uh, I wrote a little grant, we, we get different grant opportunities, a lot of them through national FFA organization. I wrote a little grant two years ago, and we built four, they're just, they're metal, well, with a tin, with, with wood-sided garden boxes, grow boxes. And I wrote that with intentions, and I even involved special ed at the high school, to have those grow boxes to where the students can come up in the springtime and plant those, and be involved, special needs students, and do a kind of a mentor program with, with some of our FFA members, some of our students in, in the greenhouse classes. Um, we've done that a little bit, but we haven't had the space really to do that very well. Uh, weather's kinda gotten into it, too, 'cause you really, to get in there with a wheelchair is difficult, it's muddy. Um, we, I get a lot of special needs students in the floriculture class, so they, they send those students down there, and, and they love the hands-on, 'cause we, we make some different designs and things. Um, so that's, they get really excited about that, and they, they learn some, some skills, so they, they can learn how to, to easily grow cucumbers, or tomatoes, or, or whatever. Even though during the summer, those students aren't at the school, we run a summer program, but we don't have the special needs students in that. But during the summer, they don't get to see the harvest. Uh, some of those vegetables and things, we've taken to the food banks. Uh, last year, I had a student do it as a project. He ran the garden, uh, in the grow beds, and he, he's sold all that to, uh, the farmer's market downtown here. So we would like to expand a little bit with that, uh, with the facilities. That would definitely help.
Design coming from the high school.
Coming out, well, and, and those students, where their rooms are, they're close. So they wouldn't have to go up the elevator or on the other end of the school to get to where we'd be. So, yes, we'd, we'd like to do more that way. My wife's a special ed teacher, and my second oldest daughter is a new special ed teacher here at, at Vernal Middle School. So, kinda have a soft spot in my heart for that, so.
Thank you.
To address it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one of the reasons why we proposed to, to move the location, originally, we were gonna put the, uh, I think Jason already alluded to this, we were gonna put the new facility up on the hill, but we looked at solutions with our architects on, on how to make that accessible. And it's extremely difficult and expensive, and then the maintenance on, uh, could you imagine a, a sidewalk that has to, uh, ramp, you know, zigzag up that hill that becomes a quarter mile of, of, you know, sidewalk to maintain, and the expense, and then the time to get, you know, those kids up there? The, the new location, literally, they come out the building, it's flat, they can go right across the road on an accessible route and, and be able to access that full program. Eventually, when we get all those greenhouses moved over, uh, there'll be no hill, um, to, to burden that process, so that's the plan.
Two hundred and fifty engineering students, so that would affect them.
Just as much.
And then, I, you have one, three questions? And I'll stop. Just, I just, um, concern would be, just the construction during school, what, what, tell me what the effects of, I mean, what, what would happen? With, I know, affect the parking lot, probably, right, the, just, it's such a busy.
Yeah, that's.
In and out there.
That road that they're gonna cross to get to the ag building is very busy. It's where our buses come in.
Right.
So we would certainly, uh, so just, this would be a discussion if,
Later.
that we would work with the construction company, but my vision would be that, uh, any impact would be to that, to the staff parking lot, apologies to all the high school staff. But that's where we, if we had to stage or do different things or, or impact.
Could there be a different entrance for the construction folks? I guess that's down, if, it depends on what we do here.
I think the biggest impact will be on seminary kids.
Seminary, okay.
Um, also, Robin Osho will make the construction company, keep anybody out of there. That's why when you go by a construction site, they have them big fences and stuff. If you're not authorized to be, it's hard to had areas and all them kinda things, they'll have a fence so that our students can't get into them. Osho will require them to do that.
So will seminary students be able to cross?
Yeah, they will, but there's gonna have to be some provisions there, uh, just because of the proximity of the seminary building to where all that construction is happening. So I think that's gonna be the, the, the biggest, uh, consideration. Staff, yes, it will impact that staff parking lot, but, um, I don't, it's not gonna be significant, because it's already removed from the main building.
So.
They mitigate it, right? I mean, the.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
I don't see start-to-finish times in here on.
Yeah, it's, it's July seventh is when they could start, or that's already passed, but, um, a- as soon as possible start time, the, the, uh, low bid, um, has a predicted finish of April first, uh, twenty twenty-three.
Is it in his, in their bid?
In their bid.
Alright, I didn't look.
Yep.
Alright.
And the, and the higher bid was at August first, twenty twenty-three.
Alright, a lot of discussion.
Do you have another question?
What's the mod, can they, can we motivate them to get them equipped, or what's, do we have a, I didn't see anything in the IFB? Before, like, if they're late?
So, if they're, it's not in the IFB, but it's in their bid, and it's a thousand, I could read it, but I, it's a thousand dollars per day. I don't know if it's calendar day or workday, I'd have to go look at it again, but. Past April first. Um, we, so first of all, in looking at that bid, I think we are, I at least was very excited to see that aggressive of a time finish, and, um, so I'm excited to see that. So, I, I guess, I'm not as concerned about trying to prod them to get it done. Um, we don't have any early completion incentive built into this at all, uh, you can, but right now, we're just hopeful that we get all the materials and subs and everything in time just to finish the project, uh, at that time. But based on the two bids, it, it seems like a pretty aggressive, um, pretty aggressive schedule.
Okay, I have a question. So, there's no question of the value of it, right? But I'm trying to think about this, the timing right now, and how that all works with everything that's happening with the economy. I know a lot of businesses that have had troubles with their subs, not even following through with what their bids were, and so there's been overages, so we're already, you know, we're looking at like three times what we originally planned to spend, and then potentially, because there's just no way to predict in the economy right now, we could wind up going over that.
Only to the contingency amount, though.
The contingency amount that's built in is a hundred thousand dollars.
It can't go over that.
It can't go over that. So it's in the.
That's why they, the bid is high, because they're, they're being conservative, protecting themselves from the very thing you're talking about.
Yeah.
So that's already built in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
It's a great question, and, and you know.
I, I have seen in the industry, even when that was built in, that people have not been shy about saying, "Well, we're not gonna honor it, go for it, try to sue us." Um, and that is a concern, that I'm, I'm just trying to, to balance everything, wha- what I'm thinking about. So what is the, is there a reason that this is more, that we need to do this now versus a year from now?
So, can I answer that? Alright. We don't have a crystal ball, right?
Yeah.
Um, but we're on a trajectory right now where a year from now might cost us five million dollars. We just don't know. Um, it's not likely that the prices, they don't usually go down, they might stabilize, but, um, we just don't know. I mean, that's, that's the big, right, that's the big question here. I don't, I don't think we're really questioning whether we wanna build the facility. We've already made that decision when the board, uh, extended that two million dollar budget. But the question is, is, wow, okay, is, is it worth the three point five? And, and is, is our, is there really something funny about our timing? Well, yeah, it would've been better to start the thing six months ago, right? Uh, but, but we, we weren't in a position to do that. I, I think that people that are looking to build a house in the community right now are faced with the same exact dilemma, and some started, and some waited, and some that waited now are gonna pay even more than is if they would've started six months ago, or a year ago. So it's, it's just, it's a hard question. But when you look at trends in the economy, rarely does the cost of construction actually get less. Rarely. Uh, this is a small project, um, it, it's, it's gonna be a, 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 a large per square foot bid, really, no matter what. It's just relative to the market. Right now, the market, yeah, it's high. We just don't know what's gonna happen to it. Now, we can go into a recession or a depression that might cause prices to come down, but if that happens, we're probably not gonna wanna spend money under that environment either, right? It's just tough. It's a hard call.
So, are the materials available today? Do we, do we know?
That part, um, we haven't really began real big talks with the, with the, with the bidders as, we haven't awarded, so just with respect to them, we haven't dove into that a great deal. I have heard from others, before we were even doing this project, that, yeah, metal buildings are, are gonna be hard to come by. But that's just per supplier, I, I don't know.
Depending on the supplier. I know right now, for us, it's almost impossible.
Yeah. Yeah, but you know, um, there's a penalty in there, and, uh, the, the company that won the bid is, is, they, they had to reasonably calculate that they could get those buildings before they put that, what I would call an ambitious timeline in place. It's ambitious.
So I'm like, Tanya, it's, it's, the, the challenge is, is when? You know, I, I think we're paying a premium for these subcontractors right now, obvious. We've seen a lot of subcontractors, we've seen a lot of contractors default, 'cause there's better money to be made elsewhere.
Right.
That's a challenging time to build.
I, I think on the flip side too, though, Vernal. Oil prices right now, so our little economy is, uh, is a, I mean, I mean, again, don't have a crystal ball, but I'm just saying, I don't feel gloom and doom right now. I don't know. Guess I'm optimistic.
It just depends on what you believe. I mean, as board members, do you really believe the costs are gonna come down in building? It's, we're not talking about existing structures here, it's different.
I don't think that, I, I don't look at it and think that the cost will come down. I think the availability of subcontractors could come down to where they give us a price more reasonable to what they're giving
Yeah.
people that are closer. That, that's my only thing on the timing.
You, you could be right. And, and one thing, you know, that we, we've already had conversations with the contractor about is that, uh, the idea that once the board sets the budget, or, or at least approves this project, we, we can go into a, a value engineering mode with our architects, and I, you know, I, I can't say that that's gonna save a lot of money, but, um, they're willing to look at that. They're willing to sit around a table and say, "Okay, what measures can we take, whether it be in design, or how, you know, those subs are, are bid out that can save the school districts some money?"
Yeah. There's a, there's a shed built, uh, covered shed on the side that, I mean, there's a lot of, there, there's a few things, maybe not a lot, but there's a few things that we could look at, um, changing or, or eliminating, or, or working. And that would be a group, kind of a group, sit down and.
Yeah, I, I looked through some of those, Jason. Wasn't a lot there that I thought was pork in this.
Right.
Ag building.
Very nice.
Just, it just didn't look like it to me. I mean, there's, you know, concrete is not the issue right now, it's, you know, it's the subs and the metal, so.
Well, in my, in my opinion, they, um, I don't think we can build it cheaper in a year from now. A year ago, I think we could've built it a million dollars cheaper. But I think as a school board that we, we have worked on this now for a lo- a long time. And so I think whatever we decide tonight, um, we either need to get the project done and move forward and get on, we've got lots of other things that we've got to work on, or, or scrap it for a few years, and then we'll still have questions then. But I want everybody to remember that there was, um, and this isn't my figures, this is from the, um, Federal government Bureau of Agriculture. UNTA Basin generated sixty-six million dollars in agriculture last year. And I think we've built lots of facilities for our football players and our baseball players, and, and everybody. And the ag department has been put on the back burner until now, and I'd really, I'd really like to see, I, I firmly believe that, um, uh, the ag department will grow substantially if they have the room and the opportunity to do th- them kinds of things. And, and rather, people, a lot of people believe, well, there's not that many in agriculture left in the UNTA Basin, but there is. Um, as I look down, as I look down this board, um, a lot of us are involved in agriculture. May not be the main way that we feed our family, but a lot of us are involved in agriculture, and I think that, um, our kids that are interested in that, and some that didn't think that they was interested, and ended up being interested, have the opportunity to, um, participate in that. And then also, it gives us much-needed room. I hate the thought of, um, buying modular buildings and pulling them in and putting them in place to get us by, and this building gives us some room. It, it accomplishes two or three different things, and I do wish it was cheaper. Um, but I don't believe, um, I've been in business for a long time, and I've never seen the price of a tire go down. I have seen fuel go down a little bit, um, on occasions, but I've never seen the price of a vehicle, or tires, or insurance, or, um, and I'll pick on myself. You ever had your garbage bill go down? I give you a raise, it's not coming back down. And so they, um, I'm not picking on anybody, it's just, I just don't believe, I just don't believe it will, and that's just my thoughts and ideas.
So, Jase, Dave mentioned grants and stuff available. Are there any available, since we're doing some special needs in this building?
Absolutely, there's, there's always opportunities, CTE opportunities. There's even, we haven't had a full discussion yet as a group, but there's also a grant that the state gave us, uh, for one-time, uh, monies for tech, curriculum, for capital projects, and that's about a million dollars one time that we have to spend within a few years. I'm not saying we put, put it on this, but you asked, there are options that we have to look at as far as, um, one-time or grant monies that, that we can look at, uh, supplementing these things. I, I would say that we do a, granted, I spoke about a few things. I would go through a needs assessment and look at the best use of some of our grants, but, but we do have funds available to, that we could look at, to try to, try to get.
So the reality is, we're looking at one point five million here. We've already approved two. We've already approved two million.
That's correct.
And so, so that's, a grant really gets you closer when you look at it, if you get that million dollar grant, or if there's others available that are ten or twenty thousand. I mean, it adds up, that's why I'm asking, because that's really what we're looking at tonight, is one point five million.
Increase, yeah.
Increase.
More than what we, our architects predicted.
Yeah, that's, that's the other frustrating point is, is that, that, those numbers came seven months ago?
No, most came-
Couple months ago.
Two months ago.
Two months ago.
Yeah.
Oh, that's even worse.
However, those, uh, on the facilities committee, we, that process was, Todd, that process was super intensive. Like they had, they grilled Dave and, um, Mrs. Wright Oakley and to get the needs, I mean, they, it was like, I don't know, put them under a, I felt like they were, I mean, they wanted to get all, all the needs that they need, uh, anyway. It was, it wasn't taken lightly. I'm just, you know.
No, I just think it's such a great opportunity for special needs folks, because that's-
Yeah, I just-
I, I just think that's a huge selling point on, on this building, myself.
Yeah, the process, to speak to Robin's point, the process was actually a really refreshing process. V C B O came in and did, did a great job of bringing everybody around the table and having good quality discussions multiple times, yes. We even freed a deer and a goat, I believe, on one of our walkthroughs, so it was really fun to bring, bring them out here and, and have some fun.
So, so Jason, I've asked you this question before today. I, for some reason, that seven month stuck in my mind, the two months now really concerns me.
Sure.
That's, that's either a huge error on their part or the bid's way over.
Well, Jason talked about the factors playing in, into, you know, he called, he called and asked the architects, tell, tell us how this could happen. I mean, you know, and, uh, Jason, do you wanna just reiterate those, those, what, what he told you?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's the size of the project versus the size of the projects that are going on around the state. Everybody has work and we're out in Vernal. There's another, and I talked a little bit about that, then, so then you do have the subs, so you, there is some inflationary numbers in there, would be my thought, as was, as was Alex's. The, the other issue is this, we put it out to bid to get a market rate. So they can give us their projections and then the bids come in. And this is the low bid.
Yeah.
So that is one of our checks to make sure that we're not paying way over market. Just because, and V C B O may have missed something, we just, we can't tell based off of the bid where we missed. And so we'll have those discussions and go through it. And really get down to the bottom of, and it might, we're not the only project that's going over around the state. I've been in meetings with other business administrators and everybody's higher for, for what they're expecting. So I would say two things, we did put it out to bid and we do have at least two bids, right? So, and we do have a low bid and we have a high bid, and there's, that, that's, uh, so while this bid is high and it feels high because of an estimate from, from our architects, I don't necessarily know that it's, that it's an awful deal, if that, if that makes sense.
So is it possible to put it out for a bid?
Well, yes.
Big risk though. What, what if, what if the lows pull out? Then, then just like that overnight, we're gonna pay another million bucks if we wanna move forward. That's a big risk.
Yeah.
I deal on a much smaller basis, but the, I am sure I would be really disappointed in that bidder if they haven't give theirselves some bloat room.
My thoughts, I, I'm just saying, can we, can we go back to him and say, "Look, you're, we're, you're one point five million dollars over-"
We already, we already done that, we already done that once and, and the, us as a board voted down and rejected it, and now we've sent it back out. So it's really dangerous, Todd. But anyway, what I was, what I was talking about last Wednesday, I had a pump go down on my farm. And so, and I got it rebuilt and, and running, and I decided that I wanted a new pump for standby. Mountainland is one of the biggest irrigation companies in the United States. And they quoted me that motor and that pump fourteen thousand dollars a week ago. Today they called me back and it, it was promised to me in four weeks. This morning they called me back and said, "If you want that, it's sixteen thousand." I said, "That wasn't our agreement," and they said, "That's what our cost went up to us. If you want it, it's sixteen thousand." So their bid, their, the trouble with these bids is, is that they're putting in a bid and their prices on what they buy from their, um, um, the people that's producing the product is changing every day. And so I'm sure if they haven't, if they haven't given theirselves some, some bloat room, they're gonna lose money. Because it, it, that, and that's a terrible, um, situation we're in in our country right now, but that's just what's happening. And I don't like it. It's not right, but that's the way, that's what's going on.
Did you guys see the, the June inflation report? Inflation-
Nine point one.
Was supposed to go down and it went up from May with the increase in interest rates. So, uh, so the momentum, this thing, we're not done yet. It's not, it's not even leveled out yet.
Price, price came down fifteen cents.
Um, Todd, what, did we end up nine something for June?
Nine point one, went up from eight, eight point one seven to, to nine point one.
Whole percentage.
Whole percentage, that's a, that's, I won't get political.
And the experts said it was gonna go down.
Yes, they did.
Or stay, or flat, so, yeah, I, I almost got political.
Scoot, did you have something else you wanted to ask a minute ago or say?
No, I'll just refer to the, yeah, I didn't-
So, President, can we make our recommendation, the board can make a motion?
Sure.
And then, then have additional conversation? Jason, do you wanna go ahead with that, it's on your-
Yeah, yeah, that would be, um, I, I, I'm gonna make my recommendation with a reading of our mission statement. And I believe everything we're doing here actually falls in line with our mission statement. And it is, um, we provide a positive and engaging learning environment. That's what we're after here. There are critical needs that need to be met, but we're really after providing a, an engaging learning environment. And, um, my recommendation would be that, that we approve the additional, uh, spending, uh, for this, for this project. And, and award the bid and kick this project out of neutral and get it done. There are, we are a school district, so we operate a little, we always need to be concerned with the economic environment that we are in, always. That's what I'm here for and that's what the board's here for, is to make sure that we are balancing those things out. I've been really encouraged by the discussion both now and prior. I believe that we are doing that and bringing up those points of view. And, but we, we do operate in both booms and busts and inflationary periods and un- and in deflationary periods, which are very, um, hopefully, uh, aren't, aren't around the corner per se. But we do need to operate in all, in all areas. And the students who are, who are currently in school, um, that's why our funding sources are very consistent. That's why, um, if it's in a boom, sometimes we're lagging behind, and if it's a bust, sometimes we're, we're ahead. But we just, we just keep it steady, um, deliberate and with vision and strategy. And I believe we'll, we'll move through each time period. Are we gonna win on each one for favorability of, of how far our dollar will go? Maybe, but, maybe not, but as long as we're having the right discussions and, and being on top of the economic conditions and marrying that with our strategy and our mission statement, I believe we will make the best decisions for both community and student. So that would be my, a long-winded recommendation to, um, to award this. And if, and if we don't, um, I would like to move to other projects to kick those out of neutral. Um, to get moving on, on other things, because there's a lot of other areas, um, that are regarding student safety or better academic performance that, that we need to get, uh, rolling on, whether it's discovery, um, C E C, other things. Project management is, is a little bit of a problem as this is delayed, it's delayed other things, so. I'm open to whatever the board would like, but that's my recommendation.
Just to clarify, the larger of the two, um, bids or-
Oh, yes. And, and do the, the larger building, yep, the three point five eight one eight eight oh, whatever. The three point five million dollar version.
Do you have anything you want to add, Scoot?
Um, I, I don't, I, I think Jason said it well. You know, we, we are, we did take measures by putting this out to bid to get the lowest within this current economic environment. So that's, at least we followed those policies and controls. We can't control the environment, we can control how we act within it, and we've done that. And so, uh, you know, are, are, are we getting a great deal? No, but in the environment, we're getting a fair deal. That's just how you have to look at it. Do we wish we would have had maybe more bids? Yes. Do we wish the, the, the dollar amount would have come out, out cheaper? Yes. But, but in the end, you know, we, we did the same thing when we built this building within the environment and it was much more favorable at the time. And we saved a ton of money. Could you imagine trying to do this in this environment? It's tough, preschool, we, we don't know what that's gonna look like, but, but we, we don't have a crystal ball, so we do the best we can within the environment that we're in. And, uh, so I, I concur with your recommendation. Get this thing done, move forward.
Board members, would it be okay with you if we had a motion and a second and then we'll have discussion? And then we can vote from there and, and, and do our thing. Is that okay? Is that favorable with board members? I would entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the construction of the A G building, I'm sorry. Amount, the lowest bid.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Scoot seconds it. Discussion, board members.
Well, I'll go first. So I'm looking at these numbers of these student counts that are coming up. And if you look in eleven years, there's only one class size that's below five hundred. Has anybody, I mean, I'm sure everybody's been to that high school. If you're there during pastime, you're just up against the wall waiting for them to leave, because that school's packed and it's gonna be more, so. I'm, I'm for the extra cost because we're gonna get one great facility, we're gonna get a little bit more room for the kids. And it sounds like it's gonna be something that's gonna be a, maybe an envy of the state, I hope. And coming where we are, where we come from, this rural area, my twin sister is a bio, a wildlife biologist, she'd have loved this in school. So I think, I think it hits several needs, so I'm for it.
Thank you, Denise. Next.
I grew up on a farm, so I'm an easy sell, I guess. Um, I think agriculture is incredibly big part of our community and our economy. And I think, I, I love sports. I grew up on, on a farm and I grew up on football, but I doubt any of our football players are playing at a national level and getting paid for it, but we have plenty of, of our students that are going to make a living doing just this, and so I think it's important to our community.
Thank you, Tanya.
I had a concern about, like, is this a good strategy right now? But you answered my questions about another high school, you know, maybe those kids would just come really and do that ag. That was one of my concerns, and then, um, I just, I feel like as a board, or just as a person, if I'm not willing to support, as, as a school board member, if I'm not willing to support those kids in their academic endeavors and it meets our mission and our vision, and I think also, um, you know what it's like to go to a place that's really not, I mean, it's nice and it, it, there's pride, there's, there's the intangibles that we haven't even discussed. But to be able to go into a building that you're proud of that has the flex space, it has, I, I, I just, I, and I, and I've been wanting to get, I just wanna get the ball rolling too, so I'm definitely, I feel like if we waited, we would be making a, 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 I would feel a huge mistake, but that's just my opinion.
Thanks, Robin. Todd or Scoot?
Scoot knows I've always got something to say, so, go ahead, Scoot. I've never been last, I'm always-
Your turn, Scoot, you saying?
No, I'm, uh, I'm in, in favor of this a hundred percent because, and I feel like too that some of our students that is going to be graduating out of here will probably remain here and take leadership and, and whatever the community, and we'll have a, an ag, ag community again. So, uh, I think that our instructors are phenomenal. And I think they deserve the best that we can give them to work with.
Thanks, Scoot. Todd?
Been impressed with, uh, Dave, with these young ladies that, uh, shared some thoughts tonight, with our numbers. I know I redid the numbers, they, they look a little bit better. And I understand the, the process. I, my hesitation with this is I don't believe they will build it for, for the costs that, that they've given us. It makes me wonder if, low bid or high bid, I hope they have a lot of pork built into this. The reality is, is, is I'm with Dave on the, our president, that the fact is that, uh, if we can hold this to, to the capacity that we need to, uh, it saves maybe moving some pods in or whatever we wanna call those buildings. But also, I think most of you have seen the news report today that it looks like the, uh, there's a move to, to further the construction of the railroad. The article in the paper today said that that would quadruple our production of oil. Oftentimes we can say, "Well, will the railroad really bring any additional, uh, jobs?" Just that alone, if it does quadruple, uh, in a, in a industry that right now is their biggest goal is they have nowhere to take this, this crude or, or gas. There's just no way to get it out of here. So if that does, and it's gonna make an impact on our schools. My positive side is I've always been trying to, to spend down the, uh, capital budget, this helps, Jason. You guys know that will be a positive for me, to spend that down. The reality is, 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 are there other options? Uh, you know, as, as a third junior high or middle school with a fluctuation, you know, to take care of some of this, that growth that's gonna, gonna come. I think we're gonna see some, some major growth, not that I'm, I'm excited about it. But I, uh, I too, I, I support these young ladies and, and my, most all of my grandchildren are in ag, so, so I have to support that side of it. Not all of them enjoy ag, but, uh, they're forced into it for a while. But, uh, so, thank you again for all of you that participated. I, I, I understand and, and I hear that the program at the high school is excellent, so, so let's continue to, to grow and, and exceed the expectations.
I've already shot my mouth off, so I'm not gonna make you listen to me anymore. Are you ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Before we close, Jason, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I've kinda already said this, but I really do enjoy, um, the good discussion this board entertains. So I appreciate the discussion, appreciate the points of view. Really, thank you for the impromptu. You guys were amazing, so thank you.
Superintendent?
I'm just proud to be a part of this district. I, I think as board members, um, this was hard because we're talking about the public's assets and, 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 and dollars. And it's, it's hard. It's hard to, to have to pay more for something than we think maybe we should and, but by the same token, I think that you're doing what's in the best interest of our students. I'm so excited about this. I, I really believe it's gonna become a world-class program. And what that means is that, that there will be people that want to come and see. What is, what's you, what's you in a high school doing with ag? It's, it's, it is gonna grow, but, but more importantly than it growing, the, 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 the vision that we, we've, you know, had from Dave and I, it's, it's gonna become a higher quality program for the kids that are there. And that's, that's the important thing. So thank you. I, I'm, I'm just, uh, very happy with the board's decision. And now we get to actually, uh, put this thing in drive. So that's gonna feel great.
I want to thank everybody.
Dave, Todd, before you, before you end, I, I gotta, I gotta add, the other, Dave, I, I definitely want to see a Uena, uh, bagged worm farm so that we can send it to South California, so. Worm farm, fertilizer. Fertilizer is gonna be a huge need in the upcoming future. Sorry, Dave.
No, they, no, anybody that wants to add anything before we, um, close, everybody giggles, but, um, fertilizer's doubled this year. For any of you that's bought any of it, it is going to become a humongous thing and we can't grow things without it. And so we all giggle and laugh about growing plants inside of buildings that animals can eat and fertilizer and stuff. It's part of our world. And it's gonna become more so. I want to thank you, board members. Um, I appreciate working with all of you guys. You're not scared to ask the hard questions. Everybody stays level-headed. And, um, I think we accomplished a lot of great things. District, we appreciate you guys. We know it's not, um, um, this has been a long and grueling and difficult project to get kicked off. Thanks for not getting frustrated with us and, and we all worked till here we are. Now we can start the, the project. But thanks for all the hard work. There's been a, a lot of hours and, and, and everything. Really appreciate everybody. I think our, our community will wrap their arms around this program and it'll be a, a, a great, a great thing. Wouldn't it be great to have one of them big schools out on the Wasatch front, come look at Uena's ag program and see what we're doing and, and see how they can improve, improve theirs? And it'll happen. Board members, anything else? I'll entertain a motion to close then.
I would make a motion to close this work session.
I'll second it.
Business meeting.
Business meeting, sorry. Work session.
Did you get both of them? Tanya seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.